You're ready? We're ready?
I'm ready.
If I could have everyone's attention, please. If we can quiet down, thank you. If you have cell phones, please place them on vibrate if you need to take a call, please step outside. Welcome to the Indian Trail Town Council Meeting for Tuesday, November 12, 2019. This time, I will call this meeting to order and ask that we all rise for a Pledge of Allegiance. Commander Belk, would you lead us?
Veterans, present your arms. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone, please remain standard. Pastor, I'm going to put you on the spot. In honor of Veterans Day, in lieu of a moment of silence, Pastor, would you please honor our veterans in a word of prayer?
Father, we just come tonight. Thank you, Lord, for this day. We give special thanks to the brave men and women in the armed services who have laid down their life paying the ultimate price for those who have served, Lord, and who continue to try to live their lives, those who are currently serving, Lord. We pray your blessings upon them, and, Lord, we pray that you give them the desires of the heart, Lord. We pray that we as a community would help them realize their wishes and their hopes and their dreams, Lord God. And we ask you to bless this meeting, that it would accomplish what you wanted to accomplish, Lord God. And as a Christian, I ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. All right, veterans, remain standing. Ladies and gentlemen, give them a round of applause for their service. And as yesterday was Veterans Day, as it was so eloquently said last night several times over, not just them, but the families who they left behind while they served. Thank you for your service. At this time, are there any additions or deletions to our agenda? If not, I will need a motion to approve the agenda? Oh, Ms. Howell made a motion?
Any additions?
Did somebody have an addition?
No.
Oh, she made a motion, okay. Ms. Howell made a motion, all in favor. That would be unanimous. Okay, we have presentations. First up, I think I've heard of this person. We have a very special guest here that's near and dear to not only this town's heart, our country's heart, but to my heart. And Jack, if you can roll yourself up here without running anybody over. By accident, we know you'll do it on purpose. Right up here, I'll be fine, because I'm too lazy to walk to you.
Let me get the mic to you.
Yes, yes. I can grab it. You sure? That almost looks like a tie you might steal off a mayor's back.
That is.
What was it, seven years ago, eight years ago? This man said, "I liked that tie," and he took it off my back. Jack, it was a great honor to let you have that tie, but I need my glasses for this one, and I took them off. Here, you hold the mic. Make yourself useful. The Town of Indian Trail Proclamation Honorary Citizen Award. Whereas in recognition of Veterans Day 2019, the Town of Indian Trail is honored to acknowledge Commander Jack Campbell for his services to the United States of America, and more specifically to the Town of Indian Trail. Whereas Jack Campbell is a longtime resident of Union County, whereas Jack Campbell entered the armed services and served as a U.S. Army Combat Engineer during the Vietnam War, whereas Jack Campbell served as Post Commander of VFW Post 2423 for seven years and as District 13 Commander. Whereas Jack Campbell is acknowledged for being an All-State, All-American Commander for the VFW five times, whereas Jack Campbell is always willing to help any veteran and is passionate about his country and comrades. And therefore, in honor of Veterans Day and in recognition of Jack Campbell and his services to the citizens of the Town of Indian Trail, North Carolina, and to the citizens of the United States of America, I, Michael L. Alvarez, Mayor of the Town of Indian Trail, do hereby honor Jack Campbell by declaring November 12, 2019, Jack Campbell Day, and call upon all citizens -- did I give you permission here? Call upon all citizens of the Town of Indian Trail to acknowledge this honor, witness my hand, the official seal of the Town of Indian Trail, on the 12th day of November, 2019. Jack, thank you.
Thank you.
Jack wants to speak, but I just want, Jack, on a personal note, when I -- no, embarrass me, you've been doing that for years. On a personal note, when I call you Dad, I mean that with the sincerest of my heart. Not only do you look like my Dad, act like my Dad, have the same crazy sense of humor, you even have the same freaking nose. And you remind me so much of him, and you've acted as like a father to me for many years, and I love you.
I couldn't have done it, all we done at that post without my motto, "If you need anything done, please let me know, and I'll find somebody."
And Jack? Jack, I would be humbled and honored if, when I'm sworn in on December 10, as Mayor of the Town of Indian Trail, that you would hold my Bible for me.
Well, if you have the preacher, you keep it light.
That's good. We'll have the preacher here. Thank you, Jack. All right. Our next presentation goes to a new business welcoming them. Angela Simpson, Cake Effect. It's on the plaque where -- there you are. Hi.
Hey, y'all. My name is Angela Simpson. First, I want to say thank you to the Mayor Alvarez and to the council for giving me and my husband the opportunity to actually come to speak about our new business. I'm an owner, and my husband over there, Ryan, can you stand up, please, Ryan? He's an owner, I'm a manager, he's the baker, and we're the candlestick maker. We're everything right now. We're located at 4305 Old Monroe Road in Indian Trail, right down from the -- right in the same area of the La Unica Mexican Restaurant. We make irresistible cakes from scratch. Now, listen, y'all, we don't do it all, but we put our all in what we do. So we desire that you come out. We actually make Italian cream cakes, red velvet cake, German chocolate cakes, sweetie pies, which is a sweet potato pie. Our signature cake is a cheesecake with strawberry filling on the top. And also, we do five-flavored pound cakes, regular pound cake, pumpkin cake, lemon cake. And we do desire that you, again, come out to support the new business called Cake Effect. And again, we're located in the great city of Indian Trail. Thank you so much.
She's going to make you come up here, anyway. On behalf of the Town Council, people of Indian Trail, small token of our appreciation for coming to Indian Trail, wishing many blessings and many years of great success.
Thank you.
I think it'd be in your best interest to listen to her. Now we will move on. Sorry, lost my place for one second. For public comments, I'll open up the public comments. Thank you for your interest in participating in the public comments portion of today's regular meeting of the Indian Trail Town Council. Please be aware that these meetings are recorded and can be heard by anyone through the Internet. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. You may not give your three minutes to another speaker to increase the individual's time. Citizens will be expected to be civil in their language and presentation and act within reasonable standards of courtesy. We ask the audience as well as speakers to maintain order and decorum in your conduct throughout the public comment period. That being said, you may not engage in slander, name-calling, personal attacks, or threatening or otherwise aggressive speech or behavior that I or council reasonably believe will imminently result in a disruption of the meeting. Finally, we ask you a simple favor. If you have a grievance, concern, or complaint relating to a specific town employee, we respectfully request that prior to airing that grievance here during public comments, you first contact the town manager, the town attorney, or one of us on council with your concern. We respect your right to be heard, and we ask you to respect the town employee's rights to a fair hearing of your grievance. First speaker, Joe Brundret. Joe, you ready for this?
No, I'm not, God, I'm trying.
You have a problem, just hand it off to me.
So, all right, this should be good? All right. So, hello, I'm Joseph Brundretz. I'm a local teen here in Indian Trail. I'm currently organizing a Christmas Wish Project for Cindy's Hope Chests. Now, Cindy's Hope Chests is a nonprofit organization that helps women battling breast cancer maintain their quality of life while they undergo cancer treatments. While most organizations focus on awareness and research, Cindy's Hope Chests focuses on a patient's immediate needs. One of those needs is providing and shopping for Christmas gifts for the family. This year, we have over 25 children that would need elves to help them. These moms lack energy and have compromised immune systems from treatment, making it hard for them to get out of the house. They're often struggling to pay for their medical bills and often postpone the holidays because they simply can't afford it this year. I have stepped in, I have stepped in to help collect donated gifts for these children, who otherwise may not see joy in this Christmas. If you or a small business would like to help, I have wish lists from children who need a happier holiday. These boys and girls range from 2 to 18, and their list is a wants, a need, a wear, which is clothes, and a need, a read, which is a book. Cindy's Hope Chests is a 501(c)(3) status, and I can provide a donation receipt upon request. I would like, and I would like to challenge the council members to take a child and become their elf this season. Thank you.
Joe, well, you can sit down, you can stand there, because I'm sure, there's going to be a couple of questions for you.
Yeah, there is, actually.
Okay, so just stay there, don't waste your energy. I'm sitting down. So, right now, we're going to go to council feedback, council comments, so.
I have a question. You challenged the council in being an elf, I'm going to accept that challenge. So you, what I'll probably ask is maybe share that information in terms of the list, so that way I can know what's needed and what I can provide.
Explain how it works, Joe.
So, like, the list is, we have children have a list of four categories, one gift for each category, something that they need, a gift that they would want, a, like, some sort of article of clothing, and also a book for the, for the wear and the need. And I have--
You have the list?
Yes, I am up for this.
No, no. Do you have the list?
Yes.
How are they able to get a child, Joe, and not be repetitive in the family?
They could come up and ask me after the meeting, or, yeah, after the meeting, and I have a list of the children right here with their, with their list.
So, we should come see you after the meeting to get that information, right?
Yes.
Okay, good.
To get a child. I'd like to encourage everyone to do this. If anybody knows Cindy Summers, she's not just a owner of a 501(c)(3) and a woman on a mission, she's also a cancer survivor, and rather than falling down, she picked up and decided to pay it forward.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. So hang out, now you've just committed yourself to be in here.
See if anybody else has.
Oh, does anybody else have a question for Joe or a comment back?
No, I think they're good.
So we'll make this as long as possible for you, Joe. All righty. I will close public comments. Captain James, law enforcement update.
I'm going to try to say just in brief, it can be really quick. What I presented to you in the package front of you, I'm not really going to go over it, but you can see that they've been split between nine north and nine south as far as calls for service. The front and back that you see, nine north and nine south, is the papered fences in the two zones, which totaled about 263. So that could have been instant reports, arrests, anything of that nature. But it was something that had to be, it was a reportable offense. It also gives you a graph there on the top as well. The next set of addresses and numbers that you've got, I just wanted you to kind of see, that's where the majority of our traffic accidents are happening. These are just for the month of October, which totaled the number 77. And that's the number of wrecks that we actually investigate in the Town of Indian Trail. It's not including highway patrol's numbers and what they took by number. The last set of numbers that you got, that are also split between nine north and nine south, is the actual event, and the event by number that would have been posted in the CAD. Not necessarily a report taken for it, but it could have been anything from a business check to a well-being check to a call for service. And those numbers totaled a little bit over 4,000 events for the month of October. So, just bearing the numbers that we've got, these are, you know, Indian Trail numbers that we're presented with right now. During this transition period, I've been trying to wrap my, kind of wrap my head around this, and looking at staffing issues and the way we have our staffing set up now and currently, to make sure that we're creating and looking at these numbers, to make sure we're hitting where we need to be hitting. Couple of things I want to tell you that was going on as well, and to make sure that you knew that Sheriff Kathy hadn't lost his mind, the No Shade November that we're taking part in with the sheriff's office, the first time we've ever been involved in it, the sheriff presented a check last night for $7,500 to hometown hero, just based off of that No Shade November and the law enforcement participation in it. It cost them about 30 bucks, whether they wanted to participate or not, which, like me, I couldn't stand it. But the 30 bucks for a No Shade pass to give them a policy pass for the month of November. There was also a number of donations made in Captain Cobble's name, the hometown hero, that attached that, attached to that $7,500 as well. Two of my sergeants currently are in a mid-level management class of law enforcement executive program in Raleigh. They'll be attending that for one week out of the month up until February, I think it's February or March that they graduate from that. Wanted to let you know also that Zack Gugan has come back, and he's gone back to work, started back last week in Indian Trail. And I think he, he left over some personal reasons, has come back, he's been welcomed with open arms, has done a really good job so far. Other than that, on a personal note, I wanted to tell you, Mr. Mayor, and the council personally, that I appreciate the way you've welcomed me with open arms. Everybody I've talked to, everybody I've had any interaction with, with your staff, Patrick, have been more than welcoming to me, and I feel at home, and I appreciate that. I want to say thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to consent agenda. Patrick, did you want to?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Simply, most of the items that we list, they're typical, but I like to briefly cover all of them, especially spend a couple of minutes on the last item. Item number A is just approved in regular meeting minutes. Item number T, B, is the typical tax report that we add to the package every meeting or every month, once a month. Item number C is, this is in regard to the change order that we had to deal with when we were working on completing the field. The original change order came in at $187,000. We rejected it, and with the help of staff, we reduced it from $187,000 to $87,000. Approved budget amendment, our finance director, every once in a while, bring to my attention a few items that we move from one line item to another within the same department, that's typical, too. And the last item is approve Bantera Street Phase 1 and Phase 2 acceptance. In regard to this item, we do have a street acceptance policy. We were approached by Bantera to accept their private streets. The first thing we do is we go out to the field, engineering staff and myself, and we perform a condition survey. Simply, it's a condition survey, window survey, and sometimes we stop and look at deficiencies, and we collect all the information about deficient items from pavement, curb and gutter, anything that relates to the pavement in those two phases. And when we collect the items, we come back to the office, and we group them together, and we use some, and we cost each item based on market value, whatever contractors cost. Bantera is the only, while I've been here for the last three years, is the only residential development that approached the city to accept their street system, and they also were willing to bring the streets to standards. And the way they did that is they cut a check to the town for 300, I think, and $35,000. That amount of money will take care of all the existing deficiencies that they have right now. So what we're going to do is we'll take that money, we'll hire a contractor, we'll go out there and take care of all the deficiencies to bring them to standards. Then after that, we'll take over the streets within our street system. And staff, with the help of our attorney and HOA from Bantera, we had an agreement that lists all the items, the infrastructure that will be taken care of. And this particular one, without getting too much into details, we've taken the streets from the back of the curb to the back of the curb, and the town will be responsible for any future repair to those streets, again, back of the curb to the back of the curb. So we're very excited that this is the first development to approach the town. We do have another one right now, and we will continue working with other HOAs and development within the town to get them within the street system. Any questions from council or the mayor?
No, I just want to say I appreciate taking time to explain all of that in detail earlier today. I think it's a good move. It's been a long time coming out there, so, good job.
You're quite welcome, Mr. Morse.
So I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Councilman McIntyre made a motion, approve the consent agenda, all in favor, be unanimous. Thank you. Brings us to old business, item 9A, sale of Old Town Hall property. Mr. Sedek?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Last year, we approached council to give us permission to put the surplus property out there in the market. So we followed the bidding process, and we had only one bidder, but the bidder did not take action to close on the property within the duration that was in the contract. So we're coming here before council tonight to also get a permission to list the property or simply just allow staff to move forward with the sale of the surplus property. And as soon as council approved that, we've already has, we've already have one bidder. So if council approved the sale of this property tonight, we'll go, without getting too much into detail with the process, there will be an upset bid for 10 days, so other bidders could submit, could overbid the original bidder. When we appraised the property about a year and a half ago, it was appraised at $340,000. The only bidder bid $300,000. But again, because they did not close and follow the contract, we have to rebid it again. But before we came, before council tonight, we reappraised, we did another appraisal for the property, and it came in at $300,000.
$380,000. $380,000.
$380,000. Yes, $380,000. Sorry about that. So we do, we did have one bidder that bid $380,000. So we would like council's permission to move forward with the upset bid, and as far as I know, I think there are a couple of people that interested in placing bids on the property. Now, we did not have any conditions in the contract in regard to the buildings or demolishing the buildings, but there is a condition in the contract that whoever buy the property and decide to demolish the building or take over the use of the buildings, they have to comply with the zoning that we have right now, which is zoning for uptown, and that will comply with the requirements of the uptown master plan. So this is where we at. We need council's approval to move forward with the process.
Any questions?
I have a question. So the new appraisal is $380,000. How long has this property been on the market?
We, I think, without quoting me, probably a year and a half, but when we had the process after 10 days, allow the only bidder to get into the contracts, and it was kept for that bidder. He had a duration approximately of one year to close the contract.
Yeah, he had six months. And what we did, we opened up the bidding process originally last year in December. We had an original offer of $300,000 that this council did accept. We went to contract with the bidder after, after we did the upset bid process. The bidder never closed, and so the property was relisted about a month ago after we received the new appraisal, and it was listed at, for the new appraised value. We have received that first offer, so this, what we're asking the council to do tonight is to pass a, to make a motion-- So this, um, what we're asking the council to do tonight is to pass a, to make a motion to pass a resolution authorizing, um, the, uh, the offer, authorizing staff to accept the offer in the event the town does not receive an upset bid and, um, opening the upset bid process. So that's what we're asking y'all to do tonight at a three-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar price tag on that piece of property.
And the same bidder, uh, that offered now three-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars, her, his original bid was three-hundred and we rejected that bid.
Any other questions? Ms. Howe?
Is this including the Blythe Building?
Yes, ma'am. This will in, this will include all three buildings within the two parcels.
The Blythe Building?
No, this is, the three buildings on Navajo.
Okay, it's not the Blythe Building.
It's not the one, it's not where the sheriff's office is at.
It's been nice knowing you, Captain. Good luck in your new endeavors.
That was quick, James.
Any other questions? If there's no further questions, we'll need a motion?
Mr. Morse?
Excuse me, um, Attorney Walter, would it be appropriate to adopt the resolution versus a verbal motion?
Yeah, no, they need to do, make a motion to adopt the resolution, um, resolving to, um, advertise an offer and to purchase certain, well, a, a resolution authorizing the process.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize, um, excuse me, a resolution authorizing the advertisement of an offer to purchase certain property.
Second up?
Do I need to list out all the properties?
Yeah, just, we were gonna adopt the resolu, that's fine. Yeah, motion to adopt the resolution for, um, for the sale and the upset bid process for parcels zero-seven-one-zero-eight-oh-two-one, zero-seven-one-zero-eight-oh-two-two, zero-seven-one-zero-eight-oh-two-three.
What she said.
Okay. Mr. Morse made the motion? You need, uh, fix your voice there, Jerry. All in favor? Resolution passes unanimously? That brings us to new business, item A, art at Town Hall. Ms. Abby?
Hi, good evening, Mayor and council. Um, tonight I'd like to give you an update on several different projects. The first is our Art at Town Hall initiative. So this is something new that we'd like to start. Um, our goal is to display artwork of local, um, artists from around Union County down in the little display case out in the Town Hall lobby. Uh, if it becomes popular, we can definitely add some more space to, to display more artwork. Um, but each artist would be able to display their artwork for a two-week period and then it would culminate with a presentation about their work in front of council. Um, we already have one artist on deck who hopefully will be able to display her work in December. Her name is Kristen Horn and she runs Lily Valley Pottery, which you can see some of her work here. It's beautiful. Um, so we're really excited to display some of her pieces and we'll continue to contact other artists so we can support their work and art throughout Union County. Any questions?
No.
The second piece is the BMX and mountain bike trail that is being constructed over at Crook Creek Park as part of the expansion there. Um, this past Saturday, we invited members of, um, some local mountain bike groups to come out and ride the trail. Unfortunately, only a couple of folks showed up, but the folks that did come out were experienced mountain bikers, so they rode the trail, um, a couple of times and provided Hayden with some great feedback on how we can improve the trail, some different things we can do to make it a little more challenging. Um, so we'll be using that feedback to, to kind of finish out the trail as we make the improvements to, to that part of the park. Um, the course, along with the fishing pond, practice field and walking trails are all being designed or, and/or in progress and hopefully opening all next year. Couple other things that aren't on the agenda that I'd like to update you on. The November newsletter went out on Friday. Um, it was sent to all of the HOA contact list that we have. It was put out on social media. It went out through Constant Contact. It's on our website and went out through our news, um, section on the website. So it went out several different ways. There's all, there'll also be copies in the lobby for anybody that wants to pick them up. And then on Friday, Patrick and I will be attending, um, the Union County Early College as part of their two thousand and nineteen career rotations. So we'll be presenting to three different classes about civil engineering as a career path. So about seventy-five students total. So we'll be talking to them, getting their feedback, hearing their questions and we'll, we'll share that with council at a future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick, do you have anything to add as far as a manager's update?
Few items, Mr. Mayor, if I can. The first one will be, uh, the Christmas dinner. If it's possible, if any, the council member or the mayor has, uh, any preferences in regard to the upcoming Christmas dinner, please send me an email so we could gather the info and share, share it with all of you. We be, we begin to, uh, install the Christmas decorations similar to last year. One different item is the, the lighting system that we have, uh, at the Veterans Memorial. We could change any colors. So Adam and his staff, they're gonna be, uh, changing the color, uh, the lighting color that you see out there to reflect, uh, Christmas and the Christmas season. Also, I would like to send council an email. We're waiting for, uh, a school of government class for this year for our elected officials. So as soon as we find the right course and the right date, well, actually the right courses, I will send an email to council and get their feedback on what's their preference in regard to the course and the location. Also, um, our attorney, Karen, uh, will be conducting an orientation and information session for our council. What we're planning on doing, uh, probably we'll do it two council at a time, uh, preferably on Tuesday. If it's convenient to council and Karen. It'll be, uh, three sessions, uh, back-to-back. And I will send council also, uh, some information, the outline of the session, et cetera. And then we will ask for, uh, a most convenient date for everybody. Also, we will be, uh, conducting a training session on the UDO. Uh, this is after adopting the UDO. We're looking at this time, early December, we, we're almost done with it. So we're ready to go ahead and schedule that training session. Also, uh, we have scheduled Abby and I, uh, orientation session. Congratulations, Mr. Barber, or Mr. Todd Barber. And also, uh, I think, Abby, you've already reserved that, so that's taken care of. If any other council member would like to join, you're welcome to. But this is similar to the orientation session that we had, uh, last couple of years. This coming weekend, we are gonna send, probably Saturday, we'll, I'll be sending the new format for the manager's report. And, uh, uh, I'm sorry, we failed. I thought we did add, uh, an item, uh, to discuss, uh, Captain Chase. And, uh, the subjects that we discussed, one of them was the, the scholarship. I'd, I'm not sure if, uh, Mr. Mayor, we could add that? Or maybe, would council like to discuss it right now? Or would like to ma, uh, would you like to wait until next meeting to discuss that?
That's up to council if you wanna make it one of the, since next meeting's gonna be broken into two parts. If you wanna make it one of the final agenda items for the outgoing council. Or if they wanna, if they're prepared to make a proposal tonight, that's entirely up to the council. Anyone? David?
I'd say just add it to the next one. Um, as long as we get it, get it on there. And I think we all know what it's about anyways.
Right. If we...
I don't think it's gonna be a...
If you, um, make it as one of the agenda items for the outgoing council?
The eighteenth?
Yeah.
The, well, isn't it December tenth?
Eighteenth.
No, the eighteenth, we do have a meeting. We advance one meeting.
Next week, Monday.
Oh, that's right.
Yes.
My bad.
Will that be okay?
That'll be fine.
That's fine.
Okay. And just in regard to the same item, Adam is looking into head statue as, as I shared with council that Mr. Morse was willing to share half of the cost. So, uh, Adam is trying to get some quotes right now. So as soon as we get the quotes, we will share it back with council on the eighteenth. That's all what I hope, Mr. Mayor.
Karen, council comments?
Mr. Head?
First all the time. With all the veterans here, I just wanna thank all the veterans. Without you, we wouldn't have the freedoms that we have today and, and really appreciate it. I was, as I was looking at this, I ran across a poem that, um, Cheryl Dotson had composed and it was for, um, students, uh, school students. So if I may, I'd just like to read it. "On Veterans Day, we honor all who answered to service, uh, to answered to a service call. Soldiers young and soldiers old fought for freedom, brave and bold. Some have lived while others died and all them deserve our pride. We're proud of all the soldiers who keep thinking of the red, white and blue. They fought for us and all of our rights. They fought through many days and nights and through, we may not, and though we may not know each name, we thank all veterans just the same." Again, thank you. Last thing I wanna talk about is, um, I saw something this past weekend that I've never seen before. And I don't know how many people go out to the, um, Monroe Airport to the, um, it's called the Warbirds Over Monroe. You might go this weekend. Did you see the helicopter? Uh, we went Sunday. It's been a tradition of, of my family with my, um, son-in-law. There are three boys and, uh, his father, who is a veteran, to go out there. So we've been going out there about six or seven years. Has anybody ever heard of, uh, and here's what happened, which was astonishing. I wish I'd taken pictures of it. At the very end, uh, close to the close, um, the, the MC said, "You're gonna see something that nobody's ever seen or hardly ever seen." And as I was looking, there was a helicopter coming down, um, the, uh, the runway. Everybody has seen where the airplanes go straight up, dive and come back down. Can you believe a helicopter can do it? It wa, I've never seen it. It was amazing. It, um, it stood there and went straight up, came over backwards. I mean, just like a regular airplane, which, um, I thought was, uh, unbelievable. But, uh, wanted to share that with you. If you get to go back out there, um, uh, it's, uh, it's very good. It's, uh, dedicated to the, the veterans and it's a good time for all. Please drive home safely. Thanks for coming.
Mayor Alvarez?
Okay, uh, a couple of quick things. Patrick? Swearing in's December tenth? First meeting? For those out there, the first meeting in December, December tenth. And it'll be swearing in. It's new council with, uh, one outgoing, Mayor Pro Tem Cone. Thank you, David. And, uh, congratulations to Councilman-elect, Todd Barber. You worked real hard and earned the position. Congratulations to all those who have put their heart and soul to serve this town. Ms. Howe? Mr. McIntyre? Look forward to working with you. Uh, I'd like to thank the people of Indian Trail for their overwhelming support in my reelection. I will work hard not to let you down and to keep raising the bar. As always, I'm at your service. With Veterans Day being yesterday, uh, something that I've known for a little bit over a year and went to Mayor Lyles with the family since they wanted it in Charlotte. For many, many years, a man by the name of Garland Denny worked very hard for veterans long after his service dates ended to bring awareness to PTSD and those who suffer from it. He came up with many, many ideas and pitched them to many presidents, many government officials, up until the day of his passing. His son Chuck, no less enthusiastic. I've seen Chuck dive over Secret Service agents to get to the vice president, to get to the president, to hand them a letter. After decades of hard work, it's an honor to announce that the United States Postal Service will be releasing a PTSD stamp this January, I believe it is. And the proceeds will go to the Veterans Administration to help fund PTSD treatments. Mr. Garland Denny is an example of a soldier that never stopped fighting for his brothers and sisters in this country. And his son's a hoot. No less, he really, and we all owe a debt of gratitude to these men. And I'm honored that for many years, they were residents of Indian Trail and Union County. And, uh, just wanted to give that note. It's in this week's Charlotte Observer or whatever. I don't know how often the paper comes out anymore. I try not to read it. So, thank you to Chuck. Thank you to Garland, who I'm sure is finally smiling. And, uh, and it was a long fort battle that was finally won. Patrick? As president of the Career Advisory Board for the Early College, thank you for coming to our career rotation. And I look forward to abusing you that day. Appreciate you helping our students.
No problem.
And the engineering and all the other fields you've been speaking at, this being the second year you've come for us. Any professionals interested in helping students over at SPCC figure out what they wanna do with their life, that are professionals, don't hesitate to contact me because we have a list of everything from astronomy to chef to pastoral studies to zoology. And we even had one marine biologist. And please, we'd love to have you come talk to the students. I guess that's my rant for the evening. Thank you all for coming. Jack? That's the first time you've ever called me, sir. Again, Jack, thank you for being here. Thank you for all you've done. And I love you from, uh, God bless.
Mr. McIntyre?
Thank you. Um, first of all, thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. Um, I do appreciate all of you being here. Mr. Barber, can you stand for one second? Because we keep pointing and the residents and some people need to know who you are. This is Mr. Todd Barber, who is, uh, who was recently elected to come onto the council. So congratulations to you, Mr. Barber. Appreciate you coming in. Want to say congratulations to Mrs. Howe Shirley. Job well done, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations on your reelection. And I wanna say thank you to the voters and the residents of Indian Trail for putting your trust in me and the other council members. We're gonna continue working hard for you, um, on your behalf, trying to do right by you. To all the veterans, um, I always, um, think, when I think of, uh, veterans serving, I always do keep in mind that when they serve, their families do serve as well.
What'd you do, Jack?
Their families do serve as well as well. And let's keep their families in our presence. Because the thing is, when one is gone, you know, the other person has to pick up the slack and, and other family members. So we do thank you. We owe you a debt of gratitude for your service now and service in the future. To town staff, do appreciate all that you do. Look forward to working with you for the next few years. Really appreciate it. And everybody, get home safe this evening. I am gonna come for some of that cheesecake that you mentioned. So I wrote it down 'cause, um, I'm gonna surprise my wife and look like a hero bringing home some cheesecake. All right? Thank you, everybody.
Mr. Cone?
Like to thank everybody for coming, especially the veterans. Jack, thank you for all you've done for all these years. I'm afraid to say too much to you 'cause you, you're gonna get me somehow. I know you're not. Anyway, thank you and thank all of you. My, my dad was a... Anyway, thank you, and thank all of you, my dad was a veteran, was a veteran, my brother. And it's right, you're right Marcus, it is a family, it is a family thing, but we wouldn't be here without you. And just thank you very much for your service. You know, we all can remember, yesterday I saw a lot of veterans out and I made sure I told them all when I passed them that, "Thank you for your service," and they appreciate it, they really do. Thanks again. I also want to congratulate Todd and Marcus and Shirley and Mayor Alvarez for a campaign well-run and you guys had an overwhelming victory and I hope you keep the town moving in a positive direction. You know, you have two good council members and up here left and with Mike and Jerry, so I'll be checking on you from time to time, I'll come in and see how y'all are doing. But I want to also remind you all to, here in the local, your local football teams, your soccer teams and everything, your high schools, support them, get out, there's playoffs going on right now, I think Porter Ridge is in the playoffs. I think they've got a soccer team that's also doing really well. And that goes for softball and all sports, it's a lot of fun to go out and watch your, watch your local teams play. And again, I want to thank everybody for coming and I'll see you here, and the ones that come back next Monday, and I'll see you one more time, so anyway. Have a good one.
Ms. Howell?
Well David, we're gonna miss you, I need someone with short arms again when you're talking, he, he almost hits me every, every time. When I feel the wind, I just lean back a little bit and let him keep on talking. Jack, it's good to see you. You were the first person I met at the VFW when I went up there and you've always been so helpful and caring and I just want to know that you've been appreciated by many, many people. The thing about the Blythe building, I just wanted to make sure you still had an office, okay? I wasn't sure about that, sorry about that. The next meeting, I guess, is on, is on the 10th, okay?
No, it's Monday.
No, Monday.
Yeah, we moved it, even I forgot about that.
Okay, we took, okay. There isn't much more I want to say, except I want to thank the people that did vote for me, I'm pleased to be here and with the gentlemen that I work with, it's very nice. And I'm also thank the people that didn't vote for me because that means they came out and voted. And this is what, we've lost so many people from, their rights have been taken away and all of a sudden, election comes up and they walk the other way. And we need to get involved and get some people that you know that are gonna be good on committees to get in here and work with the town, because one vote makes a difference. And I believe it was five votes that, you beat me by. Just saying, just saying. And I hope everybody gets home safe tonight and I sort of hope it snows tomorrow, there's some, oh no, no, that means you get off work for a while anyway, I think. No, no, no Robin, okay, I won't, I take it back. And thank everybody for coming and we're looking forward to moving forward in a good manner here, we have respect for each other. And we agree to disagree and, you know, we're keeping out of the papers pretty much too, I think that's a, we're gonna give it to another town, I won't say who, but you'll know soon enough. And that's all I have to say, looking for the new year, thank you.
And Mr. Morse?
Mr. Campbell, thank you. From the bottom of my heart. Y'all were, you know, we hear about the Greatest Generation, but, and then we, and then when Vietnam War came around, things were a little bit different. Thank you so much. Cake effect. I would like to order the Italian, what is that, Italian cream cake? And please make it extra special because it's gonna be donated to hometown heroes. Well, I'll give you the date to when they're gonna have the Sugar Plum Cook-Off, that's their annual fundraiser, and this is also for, it's to support children with cancer. The challenge to be an elf, I'll accept that challenge as well, so I'll see that gentleman after the meeting. Mr. James? Welcome to the greatest town in, in North Carolina, Indian Trail is just a super, super place to live. The people here are wonderful, as, as you saw when, you know, you were welcomed by the staff and, and the folks here. We're lucky to have you as well, I hope you'll be here a long time. And thank you for, for taking care of us as well. I do have a question regarding the, the accidents, seemed like it was really heavy there on Independence Boulevard, from what I was reading. Would you say that is due to the configuration of the super street? Is that an issue that needs to be brought forward?
I hate to comment on that without having, you know, really good numbers, but I know the super street projects, the restructuring of the routes is causing some issues with what people are used to. And whether that's actually causing the accidents or not, I'm not sure, I couldn't tell you, I hate to speak on that without knowing.
Thank you. David, we're gonna miss you. You've been a strong leader for Indian Trail for these past eight years. You took care of things when other people didn't, you stood up for, for a lot of us when we didn't have a voice. So Todd, you're gonna, you've got some shoes to fill following David, that's for sure. This has been a, a good council this last two years, we've really worked well together, we've worked through a lot of old issues, some of the stormwater problems. There's not been any of this secondary backbiting, fighting, you know, taking our focus off of, of the prize, and the prize is our residents, and, and we are here to serve you. So if there's something that's, you know, burning in your heart, please bring it to our attention. Love you guys and y'all have a great night, and remember, this is Thanksgiving, and please remember to give thanks. Good night.
Okay. We do have a closed session. In accordance with NCGS 143-31811A5 and NCGS 143-31811A6, I will need a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Mr. McIntyre's made the motion, all in favor? Okay, I'm gonna ask for a five-minute break please, before, and please, David, five minutes. Tonight.
Is this his or mine? That's his.
That's his.
Yeah, well, or else.
You know, you wouldn't be you if you didn't dress that way, you know what I mean, that's you. When you, no, it's scary when you get pretty.
Because then you're just like, oh, he's going to court or something.
Court or funeral, it's like.
You know that police report, my name is probably in three accidents in those pages, because I've been in three accidents.
In the last month?
In the last.
Okay. I need a motion to come out of closed session?
So moved.
Ms. Howell made the motion, all in favor? I need a motion to amend the agenda to add an item?
So moved.
Okay, alright. We're waiting on two people. Can you tell them to hustle along? Actually, I made the motion incorrectly. I need a motion to suspend the rules to add an item.
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Morse made the motion, all in favor? Okay. Karen, how we wanna word the item that we're adding to the gentleman?
I have it, I have it.
Okay, Mr. McIntyre, we suspended the rules and approved it to add an item, what item do you want to add?
Um, we're talking about the manager's contract.
Okay. Discussion on manager's contract? Action item?
Yes sir, action item.
Okay, council, go ahead.
I want to move to amend the manager's employment contract and extend it by two years. And that will also be providing for an eight, eight percent raise in salary.
Beginning?
Beginning December 1st, 2019.
Mr. McIntyre's made a motion?
Extend.
Extend two years.
Two years from the end date.
Okay.
Yes ma'am.
Mr. McIntyre's made a motion to amend the town manager's contract to add an additional two years to the end date to also include an eight percent raise in salary beginning on December 1st, 2019. And to instruct the attorney to draw up the contract.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved sir, motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.